Hey. Today is the first. Okay. Are we ready? Yes, ma'am.
Hey, hey, make sure you make some sound then.
Is that reaching decision?
With the blue, wearing blue. Honor.
Many people didn't so bomb them.
There's only one mode. Okay, good morning, everyone. We're going to, uh, call our August 1st Board of Supervisors meeting order. And, uh, this time, if y'all wouldn't mind, uh, put your cellphones on silent. And in case you didn't know, we're all wearing blue in honor of supporting our law enforcement. And, uh, Mr. Slade, would you mind giving us our notification?
Go ahead. John, Mr. Gray, Father, you are so good. You're so good to us, and you bless us abundantly, and, Lord, we are so undeserving. Father, thank you for these gentlemen, the sacrifices that they make. Thank you for their service to our community. Thank you, Father, for those we honor today with law enforcement, first responders, those guys, Lord, and ladies that keep us protected and safe. Father, we don't ever want to take them for granted. We thank you for them. We bless you, Lord, for your goodness to us and your mercy towards us in Christ's name.
Amen. Thank you, Craig. First on our agenda, we have under public comment, Mr. Dave Van. I didn't see Dave.
Snooze, snooze.
All right. Sergeant Arum said we're gonna go ahead and move forward. Brett, issue. Come on up, Brett.
Morning.
Morning.
Um, as y'all know, every year, we, uh, do our, our annual, uh, fire, uh, ratings on all the districts. Uh, with great honor to let y'all know this morning, Monterey, Southwest, Cleary, Walters, Robin Hood, and Starr, their insurance ratings have been dropped from an eight to a seven, uh, which is gonna be significant insurance reductions in the county for those people.
So tell me, the people who live in those districts, do we notify carriers, or is it up to individuals themselves to notify them, so they actually get the reduction? How's that work?
Um, as far as the, uh, people that live there, I've told the, the fire chiefs, most of them have Facebook pages, they're gonna get that out to, to those individuals, um, and, you know, I guess I'm gonna get with Ms. Arum, and we'll put it in the newspaper just run an ad, just to let them know that that's, you know, has been changed.
In the past, the rate of bureau gets that word to, uh, the carriers themselves through some mechanism I'm not really familiar with, but at any rate, in the past, we have, we've had notifications come from constituents that they got a notice from their carrier that their rate is being reduced. So there is a process of notification, and it works both directions.
Mr. Sullivan, you have something to add?
I'm gonna notify all the ones, uh, in that area about their mileage going up, and in my statement, I can put something in there, please notify your carriers.
That'd be great.
I did the same thing when we did the City of Pearl.
Did he say mileage going up?
I don't know when it will be hit, in December, what's ten million.
Right.
You know about something that we done about the mileage going up?
What on the Fire Company, the Fire District?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but, you know, some of the, I wanna say, thank you, uh...
In other words, we're gonna all set it.
I just, I wanna say thank you, Brett. Uh, this got, I know we got started this several years ago, and, uh, I received several phone calls and, uh, because people's insurance has gone up, and we really started working. You, you particularly jumped in there and did, uh, all the things that were necessary and, uh, have stayed on it, and I wanna thank you personally. And I know, uh, most people don't realize, but just on a quick note, I know from a, uh, ten to an eight rating will drop you about, cut your insurance about in half, homeowners' insurance, that's a kinda average. Uh, that's what we saw in the southwest area where you, well, Florence area where we first started. But no, I, this means a lot to the constituents, and, uh, I don't think they realize it, but they will, they'll start seeing it. When you start looking at dollars, you'll recognize it. So anyway, I just wanna thank you personally for, for you staying on this and working hard to get this accomplished for everybody. Thank you.
Yes.
Ditto.
All right. At this time, we're gonna pass on Mr. Van. He's in a little traffic problem at the moment, so we're gonna move on to old business.
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Morrow to approve July 15 minutes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. And right on time, here comes Mr. Van.
Just, we, I moved on, sorry.
Roll up.
He's gotta wait to the end of the meeting now.
Good morning. Talk about it. Right on time, man.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fellow Board Supervisors, thank you for letting me come before you today. Uh, every year, I come before you to, uh, give you a brief report of mental health services, your mental health services, uh, here in Rankin County. And, uh, our annual report is on the way. It's at the fronters. I apologize for not having the annual report, which I used to bring to you, have the last nineteen years, but, uh, it'll be ready next week, and I promise I'll deliver it to you. Uh, but I'll give you numbers, and, uh, that's mainly what the annual report has in it. Uh, once again, uh, we thank you for supporting us, we thank you for your allocations. Without your allocations, indigent, uh, individuals that come through our, our facility over here, as well as through our community services, would not get served in mental health. We had some eighteen thousand six hundred, uh, consumers, patients that we served, uh, last year, uh, around half, fifty percent of that was here in Rankin County. Region 8 is comprised of five counties, Rankin, Madison, Capaha, Lincoln, and Simpson Counties, and, uh, out of the eighteen thousand six hundred or so, some odd consumers that we served last year, uh, right at half of them were from Rankin County. That doesn't say anything about Rankin County people, so please don't think that. Uh, our headquarters are here in Rankin County, and, uh, and most of our, uh, services are initiated out of Rankin County for the entire, uh, region. Um, Senate Bill 2100 requires me to come before you, uh, once you hear face-to-face and answer any questions that you might have about, uh, mental health services. Uh, we are, again, authorized through the legislative branch, uh, to be a part of county government, uh, and, uh, we are looked at as the, uh, public mental health services across the state, mental health centers are, in Region 8, for Rankin County. Uh, you've supported us over the years. We've, uh, asked for one increase in nineteen years, and, uh, and we've received it, so thank you. Uh, we're not asking for, uh, an increase in our allocations, uh, at all, uh, but, you know, we're just like everybody else, and services are, or the need for services is increasing and revenue is decreasing, so, um, we'll make do what we have. Uh, we have, uh, good folks here, uh, in Rankin County. We've got, uh, right at a hundred and seventy-one employees today, this morning, uh, here in Rankin County off of Marquette Road. We've got an array of services that, uh, nobody else in, in the state has, uh, the, uh, the seventy-eight counties or seventy-seven counties, uh, with, except for our five counties, does not have the array of services we have. We have full inpatient acute care, psychiatric hospitalization, uh, we have inpatient alcohol and drug programs for females and males, uh, and that's all in addition to, uh, all of the other array of services that we provide on an outpatient basis. We go into the homes every day, we have over a hundred vans on the road every day, transporting individuals to date programs, and, uh, uh, and about nine thousand eight hundred and some odd consumers are coming to our mental health center on a regular basis, right here on Marquette Road. And as you well know, in mental health, the individuals don't go away. Uh, we don't have an X-ray machine, and, uh, in most cases, uh, mental, mental health issues, uh, or serious mental health issues are not curable, but they are treatable. Uh, and so we work really well with the share, uh, and involuntary commitments. We're required to provide the evaluations for, uh, the involuntary commitment, or at least the pre-screen evaluations. And, uh, and we do that, we work with the Chancery Clerk's Office, we work really well with, uh, all of the county agencies here, uh, as well as, uh, anybody in the state. I think if you talk to the leaders, uh, in our state, they'll tell you that, uh, that Region 8 does an outstanding job, and we are the premier mental health center in the state, but it's because we have county leaders like yourself that work with us, uh, quite well, and, uh, and then the everyday, in the trenches, uh, folks that are in the Chancery Clerk's Office and the Sheriff's Department, uh, they, they work well with, with us, and I hope that, uh, and I believe they'll tell you they're satisfied with the job that we're doing.
Dave, I know in the past, you've taken some cuts, you know. How are we doing this year?
Um, we're, we're gonna get back on track soon. Uh, financially, um, like I said, we're still growing, we're still opening two hundred to three hundred and fifty new cases every month, every month, with the majority right here in Rankin County. Now, you know, if you look at, uh, national numbers and you look at our numbers, uh, you know, other folks in Mississippi say y'all are over-serving, because you got eighteen thousand something consumers in this five county area, where some of the other mental health centers may serve four or five thousand individuals. But National Mental Health Institute estimates that twenty-five percent of every population, it doesn't matter whether you're white, black, rich or poor, you're gonna need mental health services at some point during your lifetime, and so if you look at those numbers and you look at other dynamics, like, uh, who gets services in the public sector, who gets services in the private sector, who goes untreated, uh, there, there are certain percentages that goes untreated, but even at ten percent of the population or so, we're not serving, uh, that many individuals, uh, uh, here in Rankin County. So we're still underserving compared to national numbers, but the other counties in Mississippi are grossly underserving, uh, if that makes any sense. So at some point, somewhere around the ten to twelve percentile, I think, uh, will, will somewhat stabilize, and, uh, when we stop growing like that, we, we can also, um, I won't say pay more attention to our budget, but we'll have other tools and resources and other known, uh, um, issues that, that we can deal with in order to, to ensure that our budget is, is where it needs to be. Now, we have reserves in the bank, we're not by any means, uh, in a crisis situation financially. Uh, but again, I mean, you know, healthcare's being squeezed, uh, you know, you fight with insurance agencies for six months, over thirty dollars, and then you finally say, well, I got more, and, and staff time, you know, doing that, so we might as well just write it off. You know, I mean, so, so those kinds of things is happening, you know, with Medicare, Medicaid, a lot of changes there, of course, a lot of prior authorizations in the last year, whereas our physicians here in Rankin County used to authorize services, now it has to go through a bureaucratic process, you know, uh, a very lengthy bureaucratic process before anybody can get services, and so that slows things down, certainly slows the flow of, uh, cash down, but it also, uh, decreases the, uh, the, the number of incidences or the number of services that we can provide, uh, to our Rankin County citizens.
As you notice, we have three new supervisors. Have they gone through the freshman program yet?
Freshman program?
Yeah.
Is that part of the twenty-five percent, Jay? I think a couple of us have already been.
Yeah. I think I've met most of them, uh, everybody.
Just checking.
The new board members.
Did you say that on a national scale, one out of four, twenty-five percent of the population is or will be treated for mental illnesses?
They will suffer from mental illness, they will need mental health services, and, uh, which is about twenty-five percent of the population. But, like I said, there's other dynamics. Generally speaking, about ten percent to twelve percent of the population will seek services in the public sector. Another seven or eight percent will seek services in the private sector. Uh, they'll be able to pay three hundred and fifty dollars an hour to go see the physician and park the car around the back, so nobody could see them in the lobby. And then you'll have another five percent, three to five percent, that will go untreated. So you're absolutely right, your numbers are correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Hey.
Thank you, Dave. We appreciate it.
Appreciate your work.
Thank you for everything. I appreciate your support and, uh, afford to send you guys next week, and I'll deliver that annual report.
All right. Good to see you, Dave.
Thank you.
Have a good week.
Bye-bye.
Moving along on our agenda, we have the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Morrow to approve, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Ms. Ford, may I?
Good morning.
Good morning. I have a request to pay fifty dollars each for May Fairley and Sharon Walker to take the MCR comprehensive exam on August ninth at Central Mississippi Research and Extension Center in Raymond, and authority to issue this check.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Morrison. Second by Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
And with your indulgence, I need to add one item.
Ooh, I don't know.
I know, everybody up in arms.
Come on.
I need authority to advertise for the tax sale, so I think you'd like to do that.
Make the motion, we add that to the agenda.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrow to add this item, second by Mr. Morrison, all in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
Make the motion, we approve the agenda item.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrow to approve, second by Mr. Morrison, or second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Sullivan.
Uh, three items, um, accept, acknowledge the receipt of the objections for the 2016 tax assessment. As of, um, nine o'clock this morning, we only have six, but if something comes in that's postmarked prior to today, we'll accept those.
Okay. I make a motion to, uh, take receipt of the objections.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it.
And item B, petition to change the assessment to 2015 real property assessments.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
And item C, request to void, um, 2015 tax assessment. Uh, Rankin County School Board bought a piece of property, and we did not code it tax exempt, and it should be tax exempt.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Mr. Harrison.
Are you?
Do we really wanna have much discussion here? We just need to...
It's roads now.
Yeah.
Road accomplished in July, or road scheduled in August.
I make motion approved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison to approve worked accomplishing schedule, second by Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it.
Uh, review the list of road schedule for overlay for the month of August.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Um, just to comment, I did not notice District Four in that list. So the next time, let's make...
Must've been a typo.
Have two or three lines.
Yeah, it must've been a typo when that happened. It sure was, 'cause there's a couple in District Five in there. Okay, uh...
Think you made the motion, Jerry?
Yeah.
All right. Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Morrow. Any discussion?
I don't know if y'all had any discussion on any of them or not, so, keep, get read through it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Uh, the authority for engineering service to evaluate the curves in storm drain inlets off of, uh, Bradford Drive, Rondell, Haley Court, Haley Circle, Embard Drive, and Dixon, Dixon Drive.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Morrow. Second. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion?
Yeah, these, yeah, I, I mean, I'm just, I'm curious, where are, where are all these? Are these all over, these mostly up in...
Some of the little subdivision off of Bradford over there.
Okay. Okay, I'm just curious.
It's just some little short streets on there.
Okay.
Well, Mike, if we do all this engineering work, what kind of price tag are we looking at to get all these fixed? That's what we wanna know, is what's the number?
It's hard to do the number without getting a estimate out there, you know, busting them to get a estimate, what we're gonna do.
Didn't we just do Woodlands?
We did Woodlands, it's gonna run, well, I ain't got no quotes back, so I really don't know what it's gonna run, Jay.
I thought we approved it.
Woodlands. Advertising.
This is, uh...
About eighty?
Yes.
How would it compare for a number of streets with it and this, this one?
One, two, three, four, five.
It's about the same amount, I'm gonna say.
Each street?
Yeah, about the same amount on each street. It's just patching, it's not completely redoing the whole curve, it's just sections, you know, fifty foot here, a hundred foot here.
He's, he's asking you, is it eighty thou, I think it estimated eighty thousand per street?
Well, no.
No, no, just probably for the total.
Right, that's what I...
Oh, the total thing.
I was actually comparing.
That's a big difference, eighty thousand, four hundred and eighty thousand.
Yeah. No, 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 no.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Mr. Parker.
Thank you, sir. First item I have on the agenda is our Star Road Bridge replacement. I'm recommending approval of paper request number eleven to Dozer LLC in the amount of a hundred forty-nine thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars and fifty-two cents, and authority to issue that check.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it.
Thank you. Next item I have on the agenda is Greenfield Station, lots one and two. Uh, we had a preliminary development conference on it, it's just involving two lots along that main boulevard going in there, and, uh, I'm, they wanted to go through the plating process, even though it was just two lots, so I'm recommending approval of that preliminary plat today.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you. Next item I have on the agenda is the Gardens of Windward Bluff, which is a development out in the northwest quadrant of Old Fannin and North Shore. Uh, it's been in there for several years, it was originally started condominiums, and they're changing that now more for residential. The streets in there are private, and this is just a re-subdivision of some of the lots, and I have no problem with it, and as I say, the streets are private and will remain private.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? Are, when you say private, are they building up to our standards still, or are they gonna...
That was a long time, well, they're not building any, they built them, you know, a long time ago, once I was there. It was built to the standard at that time, to my knowledge.
Do we need to relook at that? To see how they are?
Not, not that I'm aware of. No, I mean, it's been no significant change, other than...
I mean, 'cause they're gonna be private anyway.
Yes, they're gonna be private.
But they were built really prior to some...
They were, they were built several years ago.
Changes we made, yeah.
On the date when they were built.
Okay.
All right. No other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is what y'all were discussing a few minutes ago, that Woodlands curb repair. I'm requesting authority to advertise that project.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you. And the last item I have on the agenda is Arbor Land in Phase Three A. Uh, Mr. Cross is not here, but, so, we have a development conference on this. This is a part of the development out there where the eagle was nesting, and had to be revised some, and they have revised that preliminary plat, uh, to adjust for that, for the distances you have to remain from where the nest is, and so forth and so on. So anyway, I would recommend approval of that preliminary plat.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Slade.
Morning, gentlemen. First item under my section is to set some public hearings. Uh, we, the first two, A and B, are to set public hearings for August the fifteenth at nine AM for the Betty McGee Langdon Conditional Use Permit. Second one is the August fifteenth, nine AM for the Ranget Dollywall Conditional Use Permit. I'd ask A and B be taken as one item, please.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it.
Likewise, items C and D can be taken together. September sixth, nine AM, Joe Ellingberg Conditional Use Permit and the Sonny Beatty Dimensional Variance Request.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item E is to, uh, conduct a public hearing for the Marshall Morrow Conditional Use Permit, McIntyre Lane, District Four property. Marshall Morrow is seeking a Conditional Use Permit to place a nineteen ninety sixteen by eighty manufactured home on McIntyre Lane. He owns a one acre parcel zoned RE1. This will be the only dwelling on the property. At this time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Marshall Morrow Conditional Use Permit. Anyone to speak in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone, uh, coming forward to speak in opposition to that matter. We'll close that public hearing. This time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
I make a motion if we, uh, go forward. Approve it.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gaines to approve, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Uh, next item is a, uh, the public hearing on the Christina Milbourn Conditional Use Permit, one fifty-nine Hickory Ridge. This is District One property. Ms. Milbourn is seeking a Conditional Use Permit to operate a rescue facility called the Central Mississippi Turtle Rescue for injured, sick, abused, and/or neglected turtles at one fifty-nine Hickory Ridge Road. The Department of Wildlife Fisheries and Parks has issued Ms. Milbourn a permit for the rehabilitation and possession of native turtles. That, uh, permit was issued on February the first. The application states the facility will never be open to the public, and there will be no noise, smell, traffic generated by the facility. If this Conditional Use Permit is approved, uh, she is planning to incorporate as a five-oh-one C three nonprofit organization. It's a one point one one acre parcel zoned RE1A. Uh, she has submitted signed statements from her neighbors that they are not opposed to this request. This time, we'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Christina Milbourn Conditional Use Permit. Anyone? I see no one coming forward. Mr. President, at this time, we'll close that public hearing. It'd be appropriate to take action.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? Now, is this just a specific breed of turtle, or is this any turtle?
All native turtles.
All native turtles.
Right.
Okay.
No discrimination among the turtles.
Make sure some of the snapping turtles could get in there, wreak some havoc, you know?
Ninja turtles?
Yeah.
It's all are welcome.
All turtles welcome. Just making sure not discriminate. All right.
Okay.
Are you trying to hurry me up?
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Item G is a public hearing on the Leotha Rogers conditional use permit, 450 Melody Lane. It's District 2 parcel. Leotha Rogers is seeking a conditional use permit to place a 2016 16 by 72 manufactured home at 450 Melody Lane. Ms. Rogers owns a five acre tract of parcel, I'm sorry, a five acre parcel zoned RE1A. This will be the second dwelling on the property. The manufactured home is for her grandson. Again, this is District 2 property. This time we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Leotha Rogers conditional use permit. Anyone to speak in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone coming forward. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Make a motion to approve, I guess.
Motion by Mr. Morrison to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrow, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, eyes have it.
Item H is the approval of the site plan architectural review for Fannin Lanes. That's 1145 Old Fannin District 2 parcel. Ms. Cross obviously is not present at the moment, although we expect him. I communicated with Daniel this morning just to be sure that we were on the same page about this particular matter. He's comfortable now after having discussed it with the property owner and with representatives of the property owner. As you recall, at the work session, we heard from the contractor who had limited information about the plans. Daniel is satisfied that the gentleman will tie the use of the facility that is being proposed to the same hours of operation as the bowling alley since they will operate out of the same facility. So those hours will be the same. There will be appropriate screening. They are addressing all of the first responder safety issues that Chief Barry raised with them. And there will be no outside music or band playing at the location. The gentleman does not want to do that anyway. So I think with those clarifications, Daniel's satisfied. At least he indicated to me by response. So that is a site plan architectural review, but because of the issues, we felt like it would be appropriate, Renee and I did, to have you guys weigh in on that. I think we're good to go ahead and take action to authorize Renee to move forward with the approval of that.
I make a motion to approve.
Subject to those stipulations that Craig mentioned in the comments.
Motion by Mr. Morrison to approve, second by Mr. Morrow with stipulations that prior committed. Now, this is not the one that's coming across the street, right? This is a different one.
Fannin Lanes. Across from Regatta.
All right.
Adjacent to Regatta.
All right.
Okay.
That's right.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, eyes have it.
Item I is a discussion of potential action to adopt the RFP for our Rankin County election systems, the ratification, and also a ratification of our prior approval to publish the notice of RFP for Rankin County election systems. On that second part there, guys, we've already approved publication of the RFP, but I got a little squirrely. I felt like it'd be appropriate for us now, if you guys move forward with actually approving the RFP, I would prefer that we have it on the record that we authorized publication of the notice after we have approved the RFP. We've gone over the RFP fairly detailed with what I'll call stakeholders and of course, that action, that activity is continuing. Even as we speak, we intend to address any small fine tuning issues before we actually distribute the RFP out to those who are inquiring about it. As you recall from the work session, Madeline was here and went over a number of the details with you. We believe that this RFP is about as thorough as it can be made and I think importantly, it is designed to engender responses from a broad and vast array of offerings, whether they be DREs, whether they be scanner, whether they be combinations of those. We've gone the extra mile to be sure that anybody that wants to submit an RFP that has an election product, they're going to be able to submit under this RFP and that submission will be evaluated fairly among all of the other submissions. It's about as good as it can be made, in my opinion. So we are prepared to move forward with the authorization on that, understanding that the publication will go Wednesday. It will be made available on Wednesday and so there still remains some, if y'all will allow us, these fine tunings of the details. There may be a grammatical error here or there. There may be an issue with the contract that we want to address. Just understand and we're ready to proceed.
You ready? I'll be there. Does she have a question?
I have a couple of questions since unfortunately I was not here Thursday.
Right.
Two things that we put in here, were there easily able to work with other electronic poll books?
Yes, sir. That is in there. Also, Jay, one other issue I think you had spoken about in the past was a five-year cost of ownership and that is in there. It is required as a part of their cost analysis, as a part of their submission on the price.
Okay.
It's a five-year turnkey submission.
And did we put in here our grading system or did we do that later?
No, sir. The grading system is in there. In fact, how we evaluate the process is laid out for them. They are able to provide responses by way of a key format. In other words, they will identify specific aspects of their system by a key or legend that we can then track and keep up with and put into a spreadsheet for evaluation purposes. For you guys, you probably won't have to fool with that because I suspect that you guys are going to want to use some sort of committee approach for the evaluation process. That would be my guess. And so a lot of the detail work in evaluating the proposals will come to you in a much more summarized format.
There's one other small thing that I know here, we're not currently set up for it, but it's coming in the future for all voting precincts to be able to transmit their information directly straight in. Do we have that?
Madeline spent a good bit of time Thursday going over with the board how that is a very important part of this process. One of the first, one of the first things she started mentioning about the response was they needed to tell us how unified their system is with respect to a punch, a submit button, and the data is uploaded to SIMs. She spent a good bit of time talking about that, Jay. So it's in there and it is an important part, but that will help them score much better if they are able to show us a plug and play for our data, getting it to SIMs.
And I know previously there were some issues with vendors being able to speak with our state system, which is the SIM system also, and accurately transmit the accurate information. Do we have a testing, nothing in there?
That's right.
Okay.
It's in there. They have to demonstrate how it is that they communicate with SIMs.
Okay. And prove it.
Yes. They prove it. And in fact, I think it's good to know that we have somebody who is patently familiar with the SIMs operating systems. We're not going to have to guess whether it works.
Yeah.
She's going to be able to tell.
What a day to miss a board meeting, huh?
We really appreciate your being absent on that most important day.
I'll make a motion for you, buddy.
Let's see if we can have it on video.
Okay, so are we ready to, what are we ready to do?
You're ready to approve the RFP for publication and you're ready to ratify your prior approval of the publication of the notice.
Which would mean we advertise when?
Wednesday.
Okay.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Very good. You've just helped us to stay on our timeline.
Our timeline being what? We hoping to get them in January?
That's correct.
Okay.
If not before. Very good. Okay, item J is authority to the board president to execute the engagement agreement with Mr. James Martin and the Taggart Ryan's Graham Firm as outside counsel for the Siemens Energy versus Rankin County matter and an authorization of Mr. Martin and his firm to retain expert witnesses or other consultants at county expense to assist with that lawsuit. We went over this on Thursday. This is our, John and I have been interacting on this case for quite some time now. We believe this is the appropriate approach for us to take on this case. There's a lot at stake here. There are arguments with respect to how we value properties, plural, is on the table. They are making an argument about our methodology and they are suggesting that it is not appropriate or proper, how we have done things. And FYI, guidance from the Department of Revenue as to how to do that. So there is a lot at stake here. We believe that Mr. Martin's involvement in this case as a noted expert in tax assessment matters is appropriate.
I make a motion to approve. I think that was Mr. Martin's fee at 200 an hour?
200 an hour. That's correct, that motion.
Motion by Mr. Morrow to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Next item, item K was passed from the work session. It is a discussion of and potential action on the request from the Mississippi Army National Guard for acreage located in our industrial park that is overseen by Rankin First to locate a service facility. Larry was here at the work session and thank you, Larry. He's back. So we'll be able to have that discussion.
Good morning. I think that the work session, I asked for your support in moving forward with this endeavor. Just after our work session, I did speak with the mayor, Brandon Butchley, and he is in support of this also. So really, we're just asking for your support moving forward.
Would you real briefly, Larry, kind of tell about, tell Mr. Bishop about the site, particular aspects of why we think this is, if we're having to give something and getting nothing in return, why this is still probably a good location to help make this area work?
They're requesting 15 acres free, basically at a dollar lease for 55 year term. The site itself is very, everything in our park is very difficult to develop. The geotech in there is just not very good, okay? So from my perspective and Rankin First perspective, it's having some activity in there might spur on some further activity, moving some of that property within the Marquette Park. We have plenty of property, Jay, and so it's not an issue of not having enough property.
And this is towards the back by the GM plant, distribution plant, across the road from the trucking center, so, you know?
Out of sight.
They're going to have to meet...
The very back of that cul-de-sight back there.
Not the very back, but just around the, you know where Lantern is? Where's the old Schneider facility across from General Motors?
Yes.
It's just to the south of that facility on the other side of the road.
And has to meet City of Brandon, has to be Rankin First architectural review.
And the City of Brandon as well.
As well.
I've just gotten pushed back from people who have wanted to put stuff there and we told them no and they would have been taxpayers and now, you know...
Who was told no?
Well, I'm not going to put them on the spot out in front of, you know, everybody in the world, but I'll tell you after the meeting.
Okay.
So that's my, you know, I just need to be able to justify to these people why we're doing this.
Well, that's what all our concern and questions the other day, Jay, was what you're saying, you know? Basically, we're not getting anything out of it. Could there be something else to go there, you know?
I know we've had a hard time getting rid of it. It's not the greatest dirt and it's, you know...
Well, I don't have a problem telling them no, that we don't support it and we won't move forward with it. I just wanted to, the letter, the request was addressed to the board supervisor, so I wanted to make sure that you guys were okay with it. If you're not, then we'll...
To me, I'm in favor. I think it provides a good asset. You know, I do agree with your analogy that it does help spur if you've got something upstairs, you know, it just, and it is at the back end and y'all have committed, the board has, the Rankin First board has committed that it's not going to adversely impact future development, you know, out there as a result of what the overall game plan is going to be. And granted, this is for the National Guard folks and we don't get anything from it, but it still is, they need a central location and this is as good as any, you know, and I'd like to see it in the parks.
Yeah, but to add to it that this really hasn't been officially approved either.
It's 2020 funding. So...
Didn't this come down a while back?
Yeah, about five, six years ago it came through. It comes through every funding cycle. They just have, they have to have all their ducks in a row prior to requesting this fund.
So we feel good about it this time?
Correct, we do.
He's asking about the funding.
Correct. We feel good about it. I met with them just after we received the letter and we discussed that. They're even hopeful that they might be able to receive the okay prior to the 2020 funding.
I make that motion to say support this endeavor.
So, do you want to go ahead with it, Jay, or you want to let them...
We have a motion on the floor. Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines, so we forward. Any other discussion?
Well, is this something you want to, that we might...
I'm not going to hold it up. I was just saying that had people been in my ear about it, you know, so I'll live with it.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
You ready for me?
I'm sorry.
That's all right. The first item I have this morning is approval to accept the FY15 audited financial statement from Herzog CPA Company and authority to execute the letter.
On who? On who?
Herzog, it's our FY15 financial statement from them. It's been through the auditor's office, signed off. It's published. I have a bound book for each one of you and it's just the letter of acceptance of that audit.
Gotcha. So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Thank you. The next item is authority for the election commission to advertise, we want your vote for the purpose of updating voter records and you should have an attachment there that shows the publication they would like to put in the paper.
Motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, eyes have it.
Thank you. The next item is authority to pay JH&amp;H Architect Planters Interior Designers invoice 16-0172 for architectural services in total amount of $306,703.47, which is 40% of the design of the new Rankin County courthouse facility. An authority to issue that check.
Where are we with this, far as them doing whatever they're supposed to be doing and getting to us?
They had a meeting with both the justice court judges and the chancery judges and I have not heard back from the chancery meeting, but after this, I feel sure that they're ready to come before y'all go forward.
Do we know what the purpose of that meeting was for?
Yes, sir. To go over the courtroom layout details. I actually attended that meeting. It went well.
I was in the justice court meeting.
No changes. No changes. No significant changes. There may be some small interior adjustments with respect to layout, but nothing that affects at all the square footage.
Right. Justice court was the same thing. There were a few small interior changes, but nothing that would affect the overall scope of it.
I make that motion.
Have we issued them any other checks? Because I thought we had issued them checks.
Yes, we have.
Yeah, thank you.
All along, yes, sir, all along.
Just a couple.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Well, when you make these changes, like we've had to make, it costs more.
We prolonged this out. We've probably added another $500,000 worth of changes.
Every time there's a change, there has to be a redesign.
We've only been working here since January.
Well, that's when all the changes were done. That's when all the changes were done.
No, sir, there were several buildings on the plans when I got here.
All right.
All right.
Who made the most approved invoice?
I made the motion.
All right. Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Morrow, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Actually, we should have been turning dirt by now.
He would have been walking in the building with this kind of money.
Well, actually, we do have one more item we need to discuss about that building, but it can wait for later.
Okay. The next item I have is authority to pay Patriot Auto Body an amount of $7,670.36 for damages, vehicle damages contingent upon the receipt of a court order authorization. This was a vehicle that was wrecked and an OPO was issued and so we're going through the court to get it fixed.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Next item, gentlemen, Tom Troxler is here to talk about the economic development.
Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, gentlemen. How are you? As y'all know, once a year, we come with the tax exemptions that have to be in by June the 1st. That law was changed several years back so that you do them all at one time normally instead of having to do one or two a month or however it works out. This year, we have six existing industries that are applied for tax exemptions plus Denbury, the one that unfortunately you nor Rankin First has any choice except to approve by state law. All six of these companies are seven, count Denbury. Mr. Tax Assessor, Mr. Sullivan, has already gone through and done his assessment and passed them on to the Rankin First Board and we'd recommend these to the supervisors for your approval today.
So move.
A second. Motion by Mr. Morris, second by myself, any discussion?
Yeah, so all we're dealing with now are these six.
Yes, sir.
Right.
And Denbury.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Actually, this is the least we've had in a number of years.
I do have a question, not about these particular ones, but I know the state passed that law a couple of years ago about the investment into medical buildings.
Healthcare, yes, sir.
And I know we have several nice new buildings coming up on Lakeland Drive. What type of exemption are they gonna be receiving from us?
They are very similar to these. They will be able to apply for, well, actually be granted, a tax exemption on land building and equipment.
The whole thing or a percentage?
You can cut out the millage that you do like for roads from bridges, you know, the certain things, but yes, sir. It would be, it would be just like, what it did was allow healthcare, if they met the criteria of a certain number of million dollar investment in jobs, to be able to get an exemption that is similar to distribution companies and industrial manufacturing type companies.
Which is really the same way every one of these sit here. We have a policy that says if you invest so many millions and create so many jobs.
We have guidelines, yes, sir.
Then we will give you a.
Yes.
An exemption.
Now, on the healthcare, theirs is much higher. Their investment to hit those targets are higher than ours. But yes, the healthcare is, I believe it, and Larry made it, $10 million or 20 new jobs, I believe, on the healthcare.
Okay.
Be very similar GI associates.
I know we got two coming, Capital and GI. What else do we know that's coming?
Mississippi, all the.
The heart doctors?
No.
Are they coming?
Which other one besides Capital or Pedic? It's Mississippi. Sports medicine, I couldn't think of. I even go to them, but I couldn't even think of their names.
What is our policy on the exemption, Tom, for we give up? We keep road and bridge? We do hit that and give up the GO, General Office? Is that how it works?
And it is up to 10 years, yeah.
We already did that as well.
Yeah. And those three are the only three healthcare ones that we have that have been approved. They're very good because we have to work with MDA and local hospitals to get them qualified. So, once they're qualified, then they're, you know, already into the system, so those have been done. Yes, sir.
We have a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Oster, I believe we have a guest coming at 10, if I'm not mistaken. Would it be possible, it's just all right with you guys, I see Mr. Underwood sitting in the back there that we talk about that Cross Gates Crossing first and then that way if we get called up, we can kind of be wrapped that up, if that's everybody's liking.
Okay.
The, we had a discussion about that. It works out.
Okay. All right. Okay.
The item that Bob was talking about there is a potential tax increment financing project referred to as the Cross Gates Crossing Project. This is in the city of Brandon. The project represents what is anticipated to be a private investment of approximately 15 to 20 million dollars. The project will include a 30,000 square feet of retail space, 13,000 square feet of restaurants and a hotel development. There is an estimation of true value that has been put forward. This is a document that I'm reviewing here from the representatives of the developer and they've done a takeoff of the increment which shows an approximate after-project ad valorem impact of about $78,000 annually, of which that represents an increase over the current ad valorem impact of in excess of $72,000. So, it would be that increment that you're being asked to consider, just the increment, that amount over current ad valorem. And that would be obviously at a rate that you would determine. The request before you is for half of the ad valorem. So, you can start doing the math there at that point. It is also my understanding, and I'll let the developer tell me if I'm wrong about this at the appropriate time, but my understanding is that they are willing to put a maximum out of pocket, so to speak, of a half million, I believe it is, if I recall correctly. And I don't want to, I will defer to Mr. Gurus and to Mr. Underwood on that as they move forward. There will be some job impact, obviously during the construction phase. Permanent job impact is estimated to be in the range of 150 employees, 140 to 150, some of which obviously will be skilled jobs, some of which will not be. And obviously, there are some additional benefits that they also are pointing to. I'm happy to make this document available to any of you guys that want to review it. This is a good summation of the project. Yeah, okay, very good. Thank you.
The 500,000 is what?
Right. I believe there was a commitment that the max, that the max bond reimbursement or repayment on our part was a half a million dollars.
Okay.
That's what I was pointing to then.
That's right.
Roughly 35,000 to 40,000 our annual bond payment from the increment impact of the ad valorem is what you're looking at and then you can just kind of do the tape, the tail of the tape from there. But a half million total commitment.
I don't know if, I hope everybody's familiar with the site there right by Chick-fil-A. It's significantly low and it had wetlands. We've already taken the wetlands and mitigated the wetlands, but the dirt work is gonna be significant. I'm assuming just about every bit of our TIF would be used for the dirt work, just about. There's one other thing we want to, there'll be need, it's not clear yet, it's MDOT, but Cross Gates Boulevard, Springfield, whatever you want to call that spot right there between 20 and 80, there's a turn lane that kind of starts close to the McDonald's. We want, the city and I and everybody wants to improve that turn lane as close to Highway 80 and make it a true turn lane cause sometimes that traffic backs up almost to 80 at noon. And so, we can start that turn lane sooner. And so, some of these funds, without coming to the county and asking for some money, of course, it's MDOT, I know, but it's, we would use some of these funds to upgrade that turn lane. They're turning right right in front of McDonald's. If it's closer to Highway 80, we can get it approved. So, any questions?
I think the question, our request is our policy. Is that not kind of where we are with this in our decision? In my comments, my question may be for the, of course, this is for the other board member, how we arrived, it's like you made it, how we arrived at that $30 million threshold, was that?
How did we get here?
Yeah, how did we get to that number back in '08?
Because we kept having people coming in at like 10 and 12 million dollars and it really wasn't enough to substantiate us doing it.
All right. How much time on your department, Sullivan, is involved in we do these things? And you get down to that 10, 12, or even 15 to 20, like we're looking at here. What is it?
It's all very time, but it definitely ties up some of my points. All of them I go through, be it's, and all tips, I'll go up there and buy, picture, Jack, the administrator. She has my work. She has awesome. So, it can be time, I mean. I'll do it. Don't worry about the view, just let it go.
You know, Bob, the problem is, is if we do this, you know, we have other developments on the horizon that, one right now in Pearl, you know, they're doing a little shopping center there, not Bloomfield, but there's another one and they would have been knocking on our door. We got the folks with Ergon, they're scratching ground right now about to bust loose and, you know, they're gonna be, if we lower our TIF policy, they're gonna be coming in hat in hand saying, "Hey, you know, you did it for these guys and you need to be willing to give us a, you know, a break too." So, and I dare say they're probably the largest employer in our whole county. So, I mean, and really, the final draw was we had a, somebody want to put in a hotel for 10 million dollars. And, you know, I desperately did not want to do it, but it was a lot of push. But from all the headache that arose from it, it was very easy to come up with. And not only that, whenever we first did TIF, we were new to the game. Whenever we did the Bass Pro and we did the first Dogwood, we gave away everything. So, we got nothing for the whole 15 years. So, we learned to withhold our road and bridge so that we at least are getting more than what we had to start with. Cause, you know, originally, you got a raw piece of land that we may be getting a thousand dollars for. Well, if we're gonna develop it, we, if we didn't do a TIF, sure, we could realize it all. But if we didn't do a TIF, it probably wouldn't be developed. But even though us just keeping a portion, we're still tripling in what we had before. And with, you know, really our, especially within a municipality, we're looking at just premature road and bridge, you know, trying to help with asphalt type stuff, so.
In this particular case, the request is for half of the ad valorem. That's better than, than how the requests have come before us in the past. Prior to the TIF policy, the requests were generally for us to give up everything or to match what the city's doing. In this particular case, if I'm, unless I'm, and I may be wrong about this, I think I'm right, the city is not pledging any of its sales tax.
That's correct.
Okay. So, they are pledging all of their ad valorem, but none of their sales tax.
See, they're still gonna gain out of that.
To try to approximate that was for half of the county ad valorem. And so, they will continue to, if they hit their increment, and by the way, if they don't hit their increment, your obligation is nil, nothing. You don't issue bonds. They have to hit that increment in order to be able to proceed with the TIF. Another thing, they are not, under state law, they are not eligible to touch the school tax. So, the impact of the school ad valorem will be realized regardless. So, in order to accommodate the request, we need to look at using that one line in our existing policy. If we're not gonna just revise our policy, then we would need to use that one segment of our existing policy that allows the board to deviate from the policy on the basis of the specifics of this request, one of which I think is the very real difficulties with the site and the amount of investment that the developer is gonna have to bring in order to account for both the wetlands impact and just the topography of the site. I mean, there's a, there's a large investment waiting, which then moves to what Jay was saying. If, if this does not move forward, will this site be developed? That is the key consideration.
I had just one thought to add to that. You know, like you said, said the majority of the TIF from the county would go towards the field work. Well, we feel that the more field we can bring in, the higher price per square foot we're gonna be able to generate on sale, which would then turn into the assessed values for, you know, neighborhood properties having land values propped up higher for current properties on the tax rolls and ones up and selling in the future. We have a better impact, you know, from a tax collection.
But no matter how we deviate and whatever reason we use to deviate, everybody else is gonna say ours meets the same criteria.
Our deviation, our justification is just to do it.
Justified, yeah.
That's the issue.
I mean, it's not just a one-time thing.
My suggestion would be that I like our policy as is. I like us having a fairly high and aggressive bar for folks to come forward. In other words, if you're gonna use the TIF program that's available, it needs to be as substantial an impact as possible, especially to justify additional work that's gonna be required on our side of the table. If you're gonna deviate this time, you can do so using what you already have in your policy. You already have a justification to do it and you would want to necessarily paper up as best we can the basis for deviation on this one occasion and make it clear that there are specifics to this project that justify the deviation on that one occasion.
I'm in favor of the project, I mean, obviously. I mean, it's a whole right now and you're talking about bringing it up and elevating it to a much-needed economic development plus for the city and it benefits the county as well as the residents. I'm in favor of it. I think Mr. Slade is correct in our stipulation on the exceptions far as the wetlands and the amount of field that's going to be required. And, you know, and I appreciate what Jared and Jay have said about, you know, prior to opening Pandora's box to some degree, but then again, that's why we make the big bucks sitting up here, you know. So, I'm in favor of the project and in favor of, I know y'all need a response, because you're ready to get going, I believe. Are you not? I mean, y'all are ready to rock and roll.
Start to clear the site and if you spend any money before you have it in place, it doesn't count towards the reimbursement.
And I do stipulate to Mr. Slade's comments prior about the reasons why to deviate from this policy because of the wetland mitigation and the onerous burden the federal government puts on us to take care of these water plants, you know, it's not necessary, but nonetheless, they've gotta do it. But I do make that motion.
Yeah, if I may, excuse me. Turk, go ahead, man.
If I may, Bob, with your permission, to simply clarify what we're doing, I want to make sure everybody's on the same page here. We're doing nothing today more than announcing the approval of a singular deviation from our existing TIF policy to accommodate this request. Don't forget, you're not taking action on this project. You're not approving a TIF. You're only allowing for a deviation from the policy to consider because they still got to get approval through the city. They have to file their intent resolution and you guys are gonna have to do the same thing and it'll be contingent on the city taking action. So, the actual movement on the project will be much later. All we're doing today is lifting the veil, as it were, for this one particular project on our existing TIF policy. So, that would be your motion, Bob.
So move then, based on what Mr. Slade just said.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Morris to deviate from our policy this one time.
I would like to handle the 30 million dollar policy. I mean, I'm for the development and I think it'd benefit the county and the city and a lot of other people, I mean, people in general. However, we've got a policy and if we're gonna move, if we see that that was, policy was made in 2008 when things were, or '07 or whenever it was, when the economy was really growing and busting.
Oh, no, let me say, the '07, the bottom dropped out.
Is that?
Yeah, that was whenever.
Is that why y'all said it, 30 instead of 60?
No, we did it before that.
Oh, okay. Well, I was thinking that, you know, had to back up. But anyhow, the policy was set at 30 million for a reason and I know, I mean, I would like for this development. Sure, I would. However, I think that Jay is right. The next one's gonna come in here and they're gonna have some mitigating circumstances that there's, the ground is bad, there's limestone or whether there's, I mean, I would rather take care of the whole thing at one time and change. If we're gonna do it, do it to 20 million and be fair with everybody that comes through the door instead of cherry picking those that have a better salesmanship or whatever.
Well, I think we all would love to see the development happen. I just don't want us to, I hate for us to deviate from the policy we have. We gonna have too many problems from it. But we have a motion on the floor. Waiting on a second. Okay. Motion dies from lack of a second. All right, what was our next item?
Thank y'all.
Can we go ahead and finish our agenda since we got a couple more? We literally have two more things here. Yeah, let's just knock them out. Discussion potential action renaming roads, re-adressing residents, Highway 43.
Those, we can accept those, I mean, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Accept those names. There's one that they did not come up with a name. And, what'd you say?
That's the A.
Okay, I was on both, but one name that was thrown out for me to consider was Lower 43 Circle. However, don't write that down. After I thought about Lower 43 and looked the definition up, boy, Lower, I mean, that's just not, I don't know if those people really want.
Are we not ready to act on this just yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the definition, decreased, diminished, junior, lesser, let. So, I thought, either east or west. Let's do east, 43 Circle or west. I think it's gonna be on the east side of 43. But whichever side the road it falls on, let's call it east or west instead of junior or reduced or second string. Down the road, they would look back and go, boy, Gaines sure was.
Juvenile.
And it wasn't my, it wasn't my idea. I mean, that was just a recommendation, but I don't think that's. Okay, other than that, they have, let's go with the names that they have chosen, the people that live on those roads.
Except for that one.
Well, that one, they didn't choose a name. I mean, that was just a recommendation that someone gave. Lower 43, we'll change that to east or west.
All right, we got a motion by Mr. Gaines to rename these roads.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morris, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next one. More name changes. Shallow Road.
I said, put them together.
Oh, all of them. Okay, all right. Then we have potential action on contract waste management placement of recycled containers.
If you'd like to put that off until Daniel is here or either I can move it to the 15th, would be fine.
Either or.
Straight up, you're sure.
No, I'd rather not, actually. We need to do something about this now.
Sorry, make the motion.
Let's, let's just go ahead and move and put the one at North Shore. Yeah, y'all, cause let me tell you, we're emptying the one at where it currently is three times a week and it is slammed.
Recycle?
Yeah.
Or everything else?
Recycle.
Recycle.
So, if we add another one at North Shore, hopefully that'll help even the burden out and at least we'll be able to tell where to go from here. So, yeah, I'd like to, let's go ahead and vote to get that done.
Okay.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Morris, second by Mr. Gaines, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay.
Thank you.
Make a motion ago. Make a motion to discuss the executive session.
Motion by Mr. Morris to discuss the. Motion by Mr. Moore to discuss the Eagle on section for personnel or for litigation.
Litigation, I believe.
Personnel and litigation. All right, second by Mr. Gaines, all in favor say aye. Ayes have it. All right. Hey, John, did you have something you wanted to add?
We rethink it. I wish we'd known that you, I'm kind of trying to follow your lead on some of this, since you are the expert in that.
Well, you definitely got me from left field, because I never dreamed in a million years you were going to be in favor of it. So I just kind of brushed it on through, man.
Well, it's not all over. We had discussed it.
I got an idea. Wait until Daniel comes in and let Bob make the motion again, and Daniel can second. And then we can go.
Why would you second?
I want to make it 20 million. I wanted to make it instead of 30, 20.
Let's don't lead your critics on the policy. Let's go ahead and alleviate this problem, and then let's discuss.
I hear why. I don't want to face, I don't want to take them in here one at a time.
Well, we do that, but they need some kind of information for bonds. But we can do that at the 15th meeting or the next work session.
Well, which would be the better, to do it now or later?
We can do it.
I appreciate you coming today and helping out with that.
Appreciate it.
Tomorrow morning, maybe?
Yes. Yes. I don't see where we would have to make the deviation if we had it at 20.
Yeah, I'm happy to lower it down. I made a, this is, this.
We're going to have this over and over.
We say that, I mean, to some degree.
We hope that.
But what does the city have a policy? What are their policies? Do they have policies, or they just take each one as a con?
Well, they told, the Grants Ferry project, they had it at 20 million.
Who?
Grants Ferry was 20 million in 15 years.
Theirs was over 30.
I know, but their policy, I thought of the, the city was 20 million in 15 years.
Oh, the policy. I don't think the city ever had a policy. They said, they said the amount of the bonds, they lowered the bonds from 30 something down to 20 or 18. I don't think the city, we ever had a policy.
I mean, I hadn't seen.
I think they take it, I think the city of Brandon, these two years I was there, took it on a case-by-case basis.
Somebody going to get him?
Go on the motion.
You know, go ahead, it's litigation.
Litigation.
Motion by Mr. Moore to go in.
Second.
I got my thing off.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moore to go in executive session to discuss litigation and personnel. Second by Mr. Morrison, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right. Executive session. Record. Oh, wait, do we need the motion to come out?
Yes.
So move.
Second.
We got a motion by Mr. Morrison to come out of the executive session, second by Mr. Moore, all in favor say aye. Ayes have it. Let the record show, no action was taken. And we are going to recess until what time? Everybody got to cut on their little microphones somehow. They got cut off during the coffee break there. We are about to start a work session for.
Budget.
And, and we need to make a motion to recess to go into a work session. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion recess.
Motion by Mr. Morrison recess, go into a work session.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines, all in favor say aye. Ayes have it.